Call the public.
What's your head?
We're in a single meeting today.
Hello.
I find this an interesting commission. Public here, call the public hearing and regular city commission of Tuesday, March 13th, 2018 to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance, crucified on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's getting tight up here.
We can't tell you where you're going.
No, this is mine. I don't know why.
I'm moving the right way.
Amy, will you call them all, please?
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry? Here. Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wal? Here. Mayor Metzger?
Here. First item on the agenda is public discussion. Item's not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring forward? Okay. That was quick. Next item, introduction of Officer Gregory Hadfield. Here we go. Chief. I was hoping so.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Well, you already said it. I'm here to introduce.
They just tell me what to read.
I know, I was waiting for somebody else during public discussion. I wasn't ready yet. Introduce our newest full-time officer, Officer Greg Hadfield, to you. To give you a little bit of background first, Officer Greg Hadfield was born and raised in the area here, growing up in Huntington Woods and Oak Park. He was hired as a dispatcher in the city of Berkeley in 1999, and he worked there through 2000. He was hired as a police cadet in the city of Ferndale in 2000 and worked there till 2001. They recognized his attributes and hired him as a police officer in Ferndale, where he worked there in that capacity from 2001 till 2005. He moved to Pennsylvania in 2005 with his family, which included his wife and two children at the time, to be closer to his mother who lived there. He was hired as a police officer in the city of Springitsbury. Yes, that's how they pronounce it. Springitsbury. Where he worked as an officer for almost 10 years, from 2005 to 2015. During his time there, his supervisors and quickly recognized his attributes, and he became a field training officer, a supervisor, a polygraph examiner, or better known as a lie detector examiner. While he was working there, when Sergeant Reed went down to Pennsylvania to conduct a background on Greg, and we were interested in hiring him, he was described as one of the hardest-working and dedicated officers in that entire region. So after 10 years there, he and his family missed Michigan, and he decided to move back, this time with three more children in tow. So he asked five children, all boys, how'd you like to be Mrs. Hadfield in the home with six males and all football enthusiasts? So Greg's brother, Andrew, is a Berkeley, City of Berkeley Public Safety Lieutenant. When Greg was moving back, his brother had reached out to us to let us know that, hey, my brother's moving back. If you're interested, we're looking for somebody to fill a position that was going to be available. That's why Sergeant Reed went to Pennsylvania to do the background. We liked what we saw and everything, and he passed all of our exams and tests that we had given. So we hired him as a part-time officer on November 6th of 2017. It didn't take long for us to recognize what he brings to the table and his attributes and experience. He has consistently, since he's been here, led our department in every category. Not that arrests and tickets are what we do mostly, but he does lead in that. He's demonstrated also an uncanny ability to locate criminals from other cities around here in his short time here. Couple of brief examples, Birmingham had a stolen FedEx truck, which he not only located one, he located two, the second one being the stolen FedEx truck, which was later found in Detroit, which there was a brief chase and we had broken it off, but they located it in Detroit. He also recently, if you saw in the news or in the paper, located a missing juvenile, that female runaway girl that they had been looking for. He stopped that car and detained those people. And then most recently, that home invasion armed robbery. He heard it come out. He was working by himself on Midnight's. They didn't give any vehicle description. He positioned himself just to watch cars go by, just started lighting up cars when people go by. A red Explorer went by, got his cop senses tingling, pulled out, lit up the car. Two of the occupants refused to look at him. I don't know about you, but if I'm driving down the road and somebody's lighting up my car, I'm going to look at them. Neither of them would look, which confirmed a little bit more of his suspicion and his experience. We pulled them over, and those in fact were the three people that had committed that armed robbery and home invasion in Royal Oak that you just heard about. So because of him, those people are awaiting charges. We decided to fill the full-time position created by Officer Fern's retirement. After carefully reviewing all of our part-time officers, he seemed to fit what best fits the city of Pleasant Ridge and our police department, so he was offered the full-time position, and he was hired in that role on January 28th of this year. One of the goals that Sergeant Reed and myself have here as leaders of your police department is the determination to make this place better every day and better in some way than it was yesterday. It's every single day we try to do that. So with Officer Greg Hadfield here, not only is our police department a better place, but more importantly, the residents here are safer and our city is a better place. So I'll introduce you to Officer Greg Hadfield.
They might want to ask. I apologize if you waved to me in the past couple of days. I didn't know who you were.
How we expect.
But thanks for the opportunity to work here. It's a pleasure to be a part of the team and have a beautiful community and look forward to helping to keep it that way.
Well, the chief always encourages us to wave with all of our fingers.
Right. For the most part, that's what happens. But thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Good news to start off. This is great. Thank you, chief. We next move on to governmental reports, and I see our representative has arrived. Hello, Mr. Wittenberg.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
I actually questioned the hire of Greg just a little bit. I actually started playing football with Greg when I was nine years old in the Berkeley Steelers, and he used to throw me around a little bit on the field. And I never really got over that, so.
Okay, then we know we got the right guy.
Yeah, exactly. No, I know the Hadfield family really well.
You can throw him around a more if you want.
Yeah, he wouldn't be afraid to. No, I know Greg's going to be a great addition to this community. He comes from a really great family, and I know him very well and his brother, who's active in Berkeley as well. So congrats to you, Greg. So wanted to come by just for a couple of things briefly. I know I saw what's on the agenda today for the resolution, so I'll get to that in one second, but I just wanted to make a couple announcements of some events that we have upcoming. First is we're having a town hall. We've had a town hall. We usually do, you know, we do our community conversations, at least two every month, and rotate between the communities, and then we usually do one kind of big town hall. In 2015, we did it on redistricting and gerrymandering. In 2016, we did it on tax fairness, the graduated income tax proposal that I've been working on. Last year, it was, I forget how to describe it, it was like a civic summit where a bunch of different groups and nonprofits and organizations that are helping to, in the community, or groups like the ACLU Planned Parenthood, groups like that, were there to just tell the community about what they do and how people can get involved, and that was a big success. And so this year, we're doing it, it's a tax town hall on how the federal tax changes will impact you. And we have Sandy Levin, who's going to be there to speak, and then we have some experts there. The panelists include a professor from the Ford School of Public Policy at U of M, and then a legislative coordinator and a policy analyst with the Michigan League for Public Policy, which is, for those that know, it's Guild of Jacobs is the head of that organization. They do a lot of great work. And so they'll be there to kind of go over the implications and answer any questions. So it's Wednesday, March 28th. Doors open at 6:00. The program starts at 6:30, and it should go to about 8 o'clock. So again, it's a town hall, Wednesday, March 28th, 6:00 or 6:30 to 8:00 p.m.
Where?
At the Berkeley Collaborative Center. Sorry, I guess I didn't say that. At the Berkeley High School Collaborative Center at 2325 Catalpa. So it's part of the, you know, part of Berkeley High School. So hope people can join us there. And then also our community conversations. Like I said, there's, you know, there's seven different communities in the 27th district, so we like to rotate every month, and we do usually two a month. Do one in the afternoon or morning and one in the evening, in case people work during the day or work at night. Give everyone opportunity to be there. We've had some really good conversations the last few weeks. We were in Oak Park and Ferndale. And then our next meetings will be April 16th at 2:00 in Royal Oak Township, April 17th at 6:30 p.m. at the Berkeley Public Library. And then last but certainly not least is here in Pleasant Ridge, May 14th at 10:00 a.m. at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. So again, that's for people that want to come out and if they have any questions, suggestions, concerns, and I'll give a like a brief update as to what's going on in Lansing, and then it's just a really kind of organic discussion. And it's always, you know, I find it pretty useful and from those, I think, I don't know if I talked about it here, but at one of the community conversations we had, a constituent came to me with an idea for a bill, and we actually ultimately took it and we got signed into law. So it can be very fruitful for you if you have some ideas and you want to come out to one of these events. So those are the things I just wanted to mention. And then a brief update of what's going on in Lansing. So the first thing is it's budget season, as it is, I'm sure, with you guys as well. It's budget season for us. I do not sit on the appropriations committee, so I actually won't really get a say until it gets to the House floor for a full vote, but obviously keeping tabs on what's going on and staying in touch with my colleagues that serve on the appropriations committee. And I know that, you know, and I see the superintendent here as well, you know, the things that we're going to continue fighting for, to make sure that we have proper funding for our schools and to make sure that our local communities don't get, pardon my French, screwed some more. You know, we've been cutting and cutting and cutting with revenue sharing and everything else, so you know that I'll be thinking about you, you know, during the, when we have a chance to vote on this and really advocating on your behalf to make sure you're getting the resources you need. I know we have a long way to go. And then fixing our roads, I don't think that's too much to ask. You know, unfortunately, my wife actually got a flat tire just a few weeks ago. So I know it's very costly driving on these roads here, and we need to do something. And I could talk to you about what happened in the past and people claiming that we made the proper investment, but I think you drive on the roads here and you realize that we haven't made the investment we need to really update our roads and infrastructure. So that's one thing. And then the other thing I want to talk about, and it relates to the resolution that's on here for the March of Our Lives, I'm the chair of our Gun Violence Prevention Caucus and started that caucus back in 2016, and so we've been working really hard to try to implement sensible legislation, you know, to curb gun violence. And so one piece of legislation that's actually getting some traction is what's called Extremist Protection Order, and in some states, they're referring to it as red flag bills. If you guys are, you know, reading in the news, you'll start to see that quite a bit. And, you know, there are people who said that this was like a knee-jerk reaction because of what happened in Parkland, Florida, but I can tell you that I introduced this last session, and I introduced this again in June with no fanfare, you know, it's just was sent to committee to die, and it's unfortunate that it takes a tragedy like this for people to start saying, oh, maybe we should evaluate our gun laws here in Michigan. And so what it does is if someone is a danger or a threat to themselves or others, with due process, they can, a family member, the, or law enforcement can petition a judge to temporarily seize the weapons from that person. And so to me, it's common sense. It's on the books in five other states, and they're, you know, they have studies, and the data shows that it actually does save lives to be able to do this. And so we're really pushing this. I've been, over the last two, three weeks, I've probably done over 30 TV and radio interviews and newspaper interviews, and this is the topic that people are talking about. So the chair of the committee, of the judiciary committee where this was sent to, we were actually on Let It Rip together. There was a show where we were debating it a little. And then I was, you know, I said, like, listen, don't let this be the end of the debate. We knew we had like 10 minutes during a segment, and there were some other people on the show. You know, he said, you know, we'll sit down and actually discuss the legislation, which we were able to do, and I won't get into the backstory of getting that set up. That was a whole nother thing. But he has not promised that he will bring it up for a hearing, but he said he'll continue the discussion. We'll see how that goes. He's, I can tell you this, when I started the Gun Violence Prevention Caucus shortly after he started the Second Amendment Caucus, and in committee, he talked about expanding everyone's Second Amendment rights here in Michigan because I guess we're infringing upon it, and I'd never knew that. I've never heard of anyone that says that, you know, their Second Amendment rights are being trampled on. So, you know, with the work we're doing, we respect the Second Amendment, but there are definitely sensible solutions to try to mitigate gun violence, and we have quite a few other states who have done exactly that, and we know it, you know, it curbs gun violence. So that's what I'm working on. That's probably the main issue, and I'm really glad that you guys are doing this resolution. There are students from Ferndale, from the Berkeley School District, from the Hazel Park School District. Tomorrow, I'm actually going to Oak Park at their middle school, Norup, for the Berkeley School District, their middle school. They're doing a walkout, so I'm going to go there. They invited me there, and I will not speak for very long because it's more about them and trying to lift their voices, and they really are inspirational to me. You know, the future leaders of our country are really getting involved, and so it's really heartening for me to see that. Also going over to Hazel Park. There's another event in Ferndale. I forget the date right now, and I don't know if it's through the school or not. I guess I should confirm that. So, but, you know, it's, oh, and there's a bus. There's students from Berkeley High School that did a GoFundMe, and they're raising money, and they actually surpassed what they were going to do, and now we're doing two buses to go to DC for the march.
Nice.
So, yeah, so that's kind of the hot topic right now, and thank you for indulging me just a little bit to go over everything, but just wanted to give you a brief update. And with that, I can answer any questions. I know Commissioner Krzyjak was the one that actually told me that this was going to be on the agenda tonight, so I appreciate you for flagging that for me. So I appreciate.
Can you get anything done on the election here?
You're asking in general. No, not a lot gets done, unfortunately. You know, with term limits, it really is, term limits are frankly bad for our state. People really don't think long-term, and I think I told you this last time, the, or whenever I was here talking about the, when they tried to repeal the income tax here, and when I was talking with a legislator about it, you know, they were going to repeal it over however many years, and I said, you know, this is really fiscally irresponsible. This is a $9 billion hole in our budget. And he said, well, you know, that's for a future legislator to deal with because we're all going to be gone. So that's very short-sighted. So, and then again, you have, with term limits, people are always jockeying for their next position, trying to figure out what's next. And, you know, the Speaker of our House right now is running for Attorney General, so everything we're doing kind of fits that narrative. So it's unfortunate. It really is. So I don't, I don't know substantively if we're going to get anything done before, you know, before the election, but then lame duck, you know, hold on to your seats, depending on what happens in the election. So, but I will be there. I promise fighting for you and for everyone here in Pleasant Ridge and throughout the 27th district, that's for sure.
Any questions?
Any other questions? Thank you. Easy crowd tonight. Thank you. And then, yeah, I'll leave some of the information. I think we actually put it up on the community conversations and the town hall, but if anyone, you know, hope people will show up, and I think it should be pretty interesting. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, you coming back?
I have something else.
What?
I was going to defer.
Well, you can defer.
Superintendent?
Oh, no, no, because she has a special slot.
I couldn't let Officer Hadfield have all the glory tonight. This was pointed out to me by Officer Shelton, who happened to be working tonight. So, as I had the opportunity before to talk to you about, he was one of the ones that, because of his drunk driving enforcement efforts and his MAD award and everything, which he's, that's been his primary focus while he works here, is getting drunk drivers, drunk and drug impaired drivers off the streets. He was selected to go to that drug recognition expert school that I told you about, which is a pretty prestigious school. He attended, since I last talked to you, he attended the two-week classroom version at Lansing, where he stayed there at MSP, the Police Academy there, and then they had group studies at night, so he was 12, 14, 15 hours a day of studying and locked up in Lansing. If anybody's been there, there's not a whole lot to do in Lansing, so anybody's just study anyway. But then after that, he got to go to Arizona, to Maricopa County Jail, where they practice what they learn on live, people that are brought in for drunken impaired driving to practice their drug recognition expertise. That's a week-long thing where they have to do numerous evaluations, and they're graded and everything by experts in that field. When he came back, well, part of that is a seven-and-a-half-hour final exam that he has to go through. And to pass each phase, which is a couple hours, you get evaluated to move on to the next phase. So he told me, other than working for me, it's the hardest thing that he ever had to do. So he's one of only about 120 officers in the state of Michigan here with that expertise now. Again, we're fortunate to have him here, and he also makes our police department better, and he makes the city a better and safer place and our roads better. So congratulations to Officer Andy Shelton. He's quick to go out there. He wants to get back out there.
No questions for him?
We could ask him about Lansing, but not.
Yeah. Just to touch on something that Representative Wittenberg, he talked about with the gun issue and everything, which is the hot topic nowadays. In April, I'll be starting year 38 in law enforcement. So I've seen it change and come and go and everything, and as a hunter and gun owner and everything else, and I know we have the Second Amendment, but I also know that we have duty to keep our residents and our kids safe and everything. So we need stricter, you know, background checks. I know, I know the process. People come here with their, apply for a pistol permit or do whatever. I go to some of the gun shows. It used to be a lot worse. You just lied on a form and they sold you a gun, and it was your word of mouth. And then it eventually got checked, maybe years down the road. Now they actually call it in and they do checks and things like that. But one of the problems that I've noticed is that years back, there was many psychiatric facilities located all around the state that people could take their family member that they saw was having problems and sign a commitment form. People could sign themselves in. The police had the ability to transport people that we dealt with, whether called or found on the street, and take them there for evaluations and then move them through that system where they could get help. Those places don't exist anymore. And the regular hospitals who provide that service, and there's few and far between, they're too busy and overloaded for this. So I think the push, especially with our politicians and amongst our community, to do what we need to do, is to try to get those psychiatric hospitals back in place so people can get the help that they need, because that's really what it is. They need help. They need counseling. And if you recognize something with a family member or a neighbor or a loved one or anyone, you know, reach out to the police or somebody, and let's try to get those people help before violence happens.
You bring up a question. Can you just, for a second, what is going on with the state, the community mental health trying to make it a private sector evaluation?
That was a pilot.
Is it still?
It's still in the pilot phase.
Still trying?
Yeah.
Still make business after what this has done in Michigan?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a push for that, but, you know, it's still in the pilot phase.
Half the unemployment disaster and everything.
Yeah, absolutely. Privatizing everything.
Yeah, privatizing.
Which you actually saw in the budget now that the governor actually came out and did away with the privatization of the, you know, the food service workers in correctional facilities because it ends up costing us more.
Three years of disaster.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
So what are, you know, is there any mental health discussion?
Yeah, yeah. So, and also just real quick, and I appreciate, appreciate the chief saying this, but, you know, we're working on, I have legislation as well for universal criminal background checks, so that, I don't think it's too much to ask that anyone who purchases a weapon should have to go through a background check. You know, I think that's, again, common sense, and you have polling that shows like 90% of the country is supportive of it. But on the mental health side, I actually served on the, it was called the CARES Task Force. The Speaker of the House appointed, I think it was 10 Republicans, 10 Democrats, or seven and seven, whatever the number was, and we did meetings across the state in various, with various organizations and mental health facilities, psychiatric correctional facility with private and public mental health services, and we're coming up with various bills to try to address some of the issues that came up. Now, the number one issue that came up was funding, and everyone said, you know, we don't have the resources to really provide the necessary care. And so I would love to see that. I mean, that's, I think, the number one thing we need to address, but separate from that, there are some things that we're working on in a bipartisan fashion. So I think we actually released the report on that probably a month or so ago without any bills that had been drafted, just the, what things we were going to work on, and I can get a copy of that report for you. But we're actually working on the bills currently, so some of them are getting introduced. But again, it's making sure they have the resources they need as well.
Well, it's now, they've closed the facilities.
That's right.
Mr. Engler, right?
Yes.
And now it's become a prison situation.
Right.
I mean, the prisons, most, a lot of the prison system is holding what should have been in mental health.
Sure. And it's tough. I understand with our, you know, our law enforcement is, you know, they end up having to be like psychiatrists and, you know, they're doing this, you know, and that's not what, you know, they're supposed to be out there doing other things, but unfortunately, they're the first line of defense. When anything happens, they get called, and they're already strapped right now. You know, the resources for our public safety departments are strapped across the state as well. I mean, this is, it impacts everyone. And so, you know, we need to, through the budget process, you know, you look at a budget, it's like a statement of your values, right? And so there are things that I think we need to be investing in, public education without question is up there, and, you know, vulnerable citizens, and then I think mental health is something that we really need to address. I really think that's something we need to address. But, you know, and then along the lines, when I was, you know, talking about with the gun safety, those are things that have to work in concert, right? I mean, you can't do one without the other, and I don't think it's completely one or completely the other, but we do have more gun violence in our country as, you know, as compared to any other country in the world. And so, again, there are simple things that we can implement that are working in other states. Massachusetts is a great example of that, California, that we can point to and say we need to be, you know, doing things like universal criminal background checks, extremist protection orders, like, you know, with training for people to own weapons, keeping guns out of schools. So, you know, there are quite a few things we should, we should be working on.
Sorry, put you on the spot.
Always happy to chat. Give me a microphone, it's fine.
Thank you.
I'm done.
You're done?
Unless you want more. Want more?
We always love it. I think that's, any other, I don't think we have any other governmental report. Next, we go to the 2018 City and Pleasant Ridge Foundation project announcement. I see Keith back there. I'm not sure who gives us the official announcement.
Keith, you want me to do it or you want to do it?
Go ahead.
All right. We have been meeting with the foundation, and I guess, I want to say pitching, but maybe, you know, offering some potential projects around the city. The foundation's always looking for something exciting to fund with their annual auction. And so for this year, we want to update the community on what we think is a pretty exciting project. What we're looking to do is overhaul what we call the Big Room over at Four Ridge. You may know, last fall, we completed the new outdoor patio. The lighting has recently been completed out there, so you've got this great gathering space that's where, in the, in the park behind the community center. Right now, there's one single mandor that we do out there, and not a lot of visual connection between the two spaces. So knowing that the Big Room is probably our most important community indoor gathering space, a lot of events are held there, you know, we have city events in that, in that room. We looked at this as an opportunity to use that patio project that turned out really great, and to use that to catalyze momentum to overdo, or so you overhaul the rest of great, and to use that to catalyze momentum to overdo, so overhaul the rest of the big room. So, we brought a designer onboard, it's Patrick Thompson Design, he lives in town, and he actually did Libranoy Tap, which is a local example among a lot of other really great projects in the area, so he's been helping us out with the design. So, what we're looking at doing is, this is a concept, kind of a precedent image for what we're looking to do on that wall in between the patio and the big room. An overhead decorative garage door, probably something along the lines of one of these, and then some other double doors to increase that. These are some concepts for what the inside of the room ends up looking like for various events and how we fit that, fit the room out. So, these are just some layout images for the different ways you can use the room. We're looking at everything, furniture to flooring, to walls, to ceiling, to the, to how we make it more permeable. We've got this really great concept for an art piece. This is the wall where the kitchen pass-through is, this is the entrance into the big room, this is the kitchen door. Right here is where the door that goes out to the patio currently is. This is a felt art piece that serves as a way of making that wall interesting, but also providing some sound deadening in the room. We're looking at lighting, the double doors that lead out to the patio, that can be used in any kind of weather, but then also the big garage door, which provides a visual connection at all times to the new patio, but also in good weather, you can open it up and connect those two, those two spaces as a flow-through. We're also looking at removing the drop ceiling. We've got beams that are up there that we would expose and paint and make them decorative to give some more height to the room. We are definitely looking at sound deadening in addition to the wall, but some, something up in the ceiling as well and throughout the room. We're also looking at HVAC improvements. Right now, we have a blower that's really loud in there, so something that you can actually use when there's an event in the room, because right now, it's either or. This is what the room looks like from the patio, the new gathering space, so this is what the wall will look like from the outside. And then this is a quick mock-up, the final plans aren't done yet, but this is the idea for what happens in that room. So, should be a big and very nice improvement that'll make that room a lot nicer place to be, and a lot nicer place for our residents to have an event, or really for anything. And finally, this is just the material palette we're looking at. This is a very thick vinyl plank flooring product that we're looking at using throughout the whole room. Also provides some sound deadening with its thickness, very durable, and then just some color schemes that we're looking at. The orange to brighten up the beams, and then a mint and a beige for the walls, the mints and accent color, and then these are some colors for the felt art. So, it should be a really, really great improvement. We're really excited that the foundation has really got excited about this project, and it's going to be helping us bring this to reality. The other place that we're coming up with the money, as you may recall, we created the SCAF Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund a couple of years ago. That allowed us to invest that money a little bit differently, and with the good market, we've seen some really great returns. So, we've, I think we've returned about $250,000 over the last couple of years in that fund, so we can pull some of that money out to make these capital improvements for the city funding. So, it won't really, it won't impact our general fund budget at all. This is money that, through the good market, we've, we've gotten for free, so.
Good.
It's wonderful.
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you, foundation. After playing bingo the other night in that room, I'd love to have a dance here.
Did you win?
No, didn't win anything. It's terrible. Great, that's wonderful, that'll be, that'll be exciting. And what's the date on that auction?
The 19th.
The 19th.
May 19th.
May 19th, okay.
You can get your tickets where, Amanda?
PleasantRidgeFoundation.org.
Okay.
Now, right now, available. They're going like hotcakes. Joke two.
Get it, get 'em now, while you can. All right. Now, finally. Next item on the agenda is Ferndale Public Schools update by Superintendent Dania Bosi.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
It's clicker for the, oh, you got it, all right.
We're gonna have it. Told you it's a little strange room, but not sure you can...
Well, it's, it's perfect. This is, it's nice and intimate. So, first, Mayor Metzger, Commissioner, City Manager, City Clerk, thank you for allowing me to come here and speak today and kind of provide you a little bit of update and some information about Ferndale Public Schools. First, I want to introduce some of my colleagues. I'm somewhat new, I'm going to use the new card for about a year, but these are really the people here today who, who really are the people that make Ferndale Public Schools so great. So, they're here kind of so that you know who they are. These are our leaders within our school, and for you to get to know them and know that they're here to support also in any way they can, and so that the community knows they're accessible. I have Jamie Stottlemyre, who's our Director of Operations. I have Tom Mase, who's our Math and Science Curriculum Coordinator. Allison Mase, who's a high school science teacher. I have Deana Rochelo, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Jim O'Donnell, who's our Board Treasurer. I have Jason Gillespie, who's our middle school principal. I have Amy Seglarick, who's our Special Education Teacher, and Ann Kelly, who's our social worker. I also have Jordan Smalley, who is a newly-appointed board member. I got it, all right, I got it. I know, hiding in the corner, I don't want to get in trouble later on.
See, now you're going to have to come to every meeting so we can fill up the room.
So, first of all, I want to just let you know that in my, in my short time here, really the city government of Pleasant Ridge has been nothing but, but very helpful and supportive. I've met with Jim many times on, on things that we're trying to work on, or issues we're working through, and it's, it's just been, I know that we have a great support system through this local government entity, and I just want to thank you. Also, the community center helped us host our, you know, our annual Christmas party, and they made things so easy for us, and they were so helpful. So, I just wanted to extend my sincere thanks to that staff who made it such a nice evening for us. The reason I'm here tonight is really for, for two main reasons. You know, this, Ferndale Public Schools is embarking on a strategic planning, which is something they did about five years ago in 2013, and the current plan is expiring at the, the end of this year. So, one thing I want to discuss, kind of, that process and how residents can be a part of this process, parents, city government, all stakeholders, how they can be a part of this process. The second thing is, in my short time, there's been, again, it's, it's all been great, but there's been, you know, discussions or comments that kind of make you think, hmm, I wonder where somebody got that idea. And so, we're going to dispel some common myths of Ferndale Public Schools and kind of share some information with you. So, first, a strategic plan, for, for those who don't know, it's, it really is your, your moral compass, it's your guiding map that tells you, this is what we want to achieve, and this is how we're going to achieve it, and we hold ourselves accountable with a plan like this. So, basically, you have to know where you're going in order to get to the goal that you want to achieve, and so, this is something that's very important to us. Now, the last strategic plan that, that we've been working towards really focused on four main areas: sustainability, inclusion, communication, and trust, and communication, and collaboration. It was a plan that was really built by the community, and you're going to see, as I go through this presentation, that a lot of the stuff that they said they were going to do was accomplished. So, the 2013 plan asked for very specific things, you know, reconfiguration of our elementary and secondary buildings, increased outreach to promote our schools, comprehensive plans for achievement in behavior, increased equity, and sustainability so that we could be good stewards of our, you know, of our funding. Obviously, all of us have limitations of funding, and how can we work within those to do what's best for kids? So, if you remember, last year was the first year that our elementary buildings were reconfigured. Now, we have a K-2 building and a 3-5 building, so in essence, we went from three elementary buildings down to two, and we have a combination of our alternative and adult education program. Both of those were, were significant changes, because prior to that, our buildings were operating at about 50% capacity. Today, they're operating at about 80% capacity, so still room for growth, but not underutilizing. Also, our adult and alternative program were separate, and actually, you know, the success rate, although it was common with averages within the state of Michigan, it wasn't where we wanted it to be. Currently, now, our adult and alternative education program is one of the top 10 in the state of Michigan. So, we're seeing increased results for adults and students really who need it the most. So, we're very excited about the progress that, that has been done. We've made difficult cuts in terms of administration, in terms of, you know, they use the word "right size," I'm not a fan of that, but, you know, they've made difficult decisions to make sure that we're running efficiently. Recently, the Board of Education passed an energy bond. Over 7,000 light fixtures were changed within the district, and mechanical upgrades, boilers, pool upgrades, to really ensure that we're green. All of this will be paid with the savings, so there's not actual, a new bond levied against taxpayers. It's something that the, the savings of those changes will pay for the bond itself. And most importantly, the citizens passed a sinking fund, which has been a huge, huge help to the, the school district. It generates a little over $800,000 that allows us now to really properly maintain our buildings. This summer, you're going to see improvements to our high school cafeteria, it's going to get a nice remodel. You're going to see changes to Ferndale Upper, where we're going to change flooring and ceiling tiles, and then also for our early childhoods. So, you're going to see those sinking fund dollars in action, and continue to, to work to, to make our schools great for our students. Also, we've had a big campaign in terms of Learn Local, a campaign that's been headed by our Director of Communications, Bill Good. You see a lot of Ferndale pride within the community, and that really has been successful, and that as, as well has been a result of the strategic plan. I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussions about guns and bills and, and mental health. This year is actually the first year Ferndale Public Schools is piloting something called Impact 30, which deals with social-emotional curriculum that students have 30 minutes a day. Mrs. Rochelo actually developed that curriculum that is recognized at the state level. She's, she's presented at numerous conferences so that students understand their feelings and are able to process, you know, the difficulty of, of growing up. I think we can all relate to our middle school years, or, you know, early high school years, that this is not something that's dependent on your socioeconomic status, it can affect all kids. And so, this district has made it a priority to dedicate time within, within the school day to deal with that very subject. So, again, this is the first year, it's in its pilot program. Obviously, we're going to work to make it even better, but so far, it's been a great use of time, and we, we look forward to continuing that. There's also been a systematic look at achievement in terms of student growth and achievement. We have more offerings than, than most can think of. We have CASA, which is the Center of Arts, the Center for Advanced Studies in Arts that we partner with Berkeley, and we've seen great success with that. So, one thing is, you know, that kind of, to understand is that the strategic plan really focused on equity in terms of bringing all students together, and that's been accomplished, and really, the transition has went, has went very well. We are currently an AP honor roll school because of the number of minority students that are taking AP classes. We've seen great strides in that area, because, you know, the saying goes, rising, rising tide raises all boats, and so, we're, we're really dedicated to that. We also have a diversity committee that meets regularly, and we have the African-American Parent Network. Again, all of this came as a result of the strategic plan. So, we can see that this participation yields results, and so, that's why we're kind of calling on you now to say, we need participation. So, we have an input session on March 21st at 6:00 PM at Ferndale Lower Elementary School. That's for our community stakeholders. We also have a survey that you can find on our Facebook page or our website that will allow you kind of to, to share your thoughts and ideas. There's a questionnaire that will allow you to gain input. So, we really look, we're looking for your input on March 21st and hope that, that people can make it to that. Throughout the process, we're, we're holding community input sessions with staff, administrators, with students, to, to gain all of that to help us formulate our plan. This culminates with a strategic planning kind of workday, which is Saturday, April 21st. If anyone's interested in participating in that, please let me know. It's an all-day on Saturday, it's kind of, we lock ourselves in a room and we get a lot of the work done.
Try calling it a retreat, maybe more people will come.
Well, yeah, we'll have the food, yes. It is actually a lot of fun. We'll have good food, and most of us have a sense of humor, I would say everyone who's here has a sense of humor.
You looked around.
Yeah, I want to make sure, so.
Make sure they're laughing.
So, it will be, it'll be at Ferndale High School on April 21st, but, you know, this is where we're going to, we're going to actually, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get the work done at that time, to make sure that we're all on, on the same page, and that everything that guides all of our decisions are what's best for kids. So, I'm excited for that. Deana, I'm sorry, I don't want to call you out, but I really, I like Deana's story a little bit. Deana's been with the district a good amount of time. She had a daughter who graduated from Ferndale High School. She has a son in the district now. Deana lives in Holly, so travels quite a bit to get here.
What?
Yeah, but has found, you know, so, has found some importance of her children attending Ferndale Public Schools. So, I just want to, if you could just share a little bit about your experience and your history with the district, because I think it's an important story to tell.
Well, I don't want to get up. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Deana.
So, I've been in the district for a very long time. Many of you know me, I was the principal right here around the corner at Roosevelt Primary for many, many years, so I'm a little bit old, and that's okay. I love being part of Ferndale School Family. I think it's really, really important. You build connections. We know what matters most to our children, and we have proved beyond a reasonable doubt what that does. When we, when I started at Roosevelt, in the, at the eyes of the state, Roosevelt was basically a failing school. We turned that around within four, eight, four years and became a national schools of character, one of the highest-ranking Title I schools to become a national school of character. We took that work that that school family put together, and now we're spreading it around the district, and the student voice aspect of that, understanding how they feel, what matters to them, giving our, their opinion on things that we're doing. We are seeing the, the fruits of our labor from that, so it's, we're lucky to have a school board that allows us to think about out of the box, and allows us to get input from our students and our community and our parents, and I think that's really, really important. I had a daughter that graduated from Ferndale Schools, and now, by the grace of God, I had a little one later on in life, and he is now in Ferndale Schools, and I think that's really important. I know, everybody knows him by name, they know what's important to him, and they know how to support him, and that's not because he's my son, that's the kids that we have here, and I think that's important. I value the staff that we have. Before I worked here in Ferndale, I worked at Oakland Schools, and I supported 28 school districts, so I know what's out there, and when I talk about the value of the teachers that we have, I, you can't underestimate that. They go above and beyond every day, and I think that's so important. Any questions for me?
Yeah. Thank you.
That's awesome.
So, now I'm going to kind of shift a little bit to the myths, okay? And I'm coming at it from a positive angle, so I want to make sure I, I make that clear. But, you know, one of the myths we hear is, you know, other districts are just, are just better. And honestly, we, you know, they told me, we were waiting, we had this picture of, of this young man... young man, and we were waiting for a time to use it. That's exactly how, that's exactly how I feel when people say that. You know, that, number one, any school that has children, it's not about who's better, right? We're educating kids, and, you know, it's just something that you hear sometimes, and it's just, it's just not true. You know, we hear often that Ferndale academics are not on par with all other districts. I'll say last Saturday, our robotics team, center line, 40 schools, first place. So when people say that, I kind of chuckle, and I think, "That's interesting." We had a perfect SAT score last year. We have three former students at MIT. So when people say that, I say, "Look at the data," right? And standardized tests, I assure you, if you judged me based on my ACT score, I would not be standing here today in front of you. You know, so when people say that, it doesn't tell the whole story. Our students are more than a test score on one particular day. Not that we don't understand the high stakes of it, right? You want to go to Michigan, you want to go to Michigan State, there are, SAT does matter, we get that, but it doesn't tell the whole story. You know, if you look at, again, Berkeley and Royal Oak, they have a transience rate of about 3%, meaning students coming in and out of the district. Ferndale has a transience rate of about 10 to 15%, and that's okay, but that affects an overall SAT score. So, if you look at, if you remove transience, and you look at students who stay in Ferndale Public Schools, on the next slide, I'll show you the data that shows you, there really isn't a gap that people perceive to exist. Now again, I want to be clear, Oak Park is great, Berkeley is great, Royal Oak is great, but so is Ferndale, okay? And this is the graph of SAT scores. If you look at, for Ferndale Public Schools, students who stay in the district nine years or longer, take the SAT. They're on par with any other district. It's just, yes, we educate kids, and not all kids are the same, okay? And so, if you delineate the data, you'll see that students who are consistent, this is regardless of socioeconomic status, regardless of race, this is just students who stay nine years in the district, that's the average ACT score. So I think it's very important for us to be able to look at that, because all school districts are not the same. You know, we hear this a lot, "Well, Ferndale Schools, it's just all school of choice. They let everybody in, right? It's just all school of choice." I've heard that a couple times since starting. What I say to them is, when I walk into Ferndale Lower or Ferndale Upper, this is what I see. Can you tell me what student is school of choice, and what student is Ferndale Public Schools? As an educator, it doesn't matter. They're kids, and I'm here to educate kids, and that's what we're all here to do as a team, including everyone in this room. Now, this though, is just, we always look at data, right? That's feeling, this is data, okay? If you look at the map there, the colored region is Ferndale Public Schools. That's who we service, resident students. But the outlined border is the four areas that we serve. Oak Park, parts of Oak Park, Royal Oak Township, Ferndale, and Pleasant Ridge. 87% of our new students come within that red line. 87%. Again, I wouldn't mind if they're coming from Mars, but they're not coming from Mars. 87% of our kids are coming from those districts. What we have to remember is district boundaries were done god knows how long ago, so you have areas of Ferndale, right? You live in Ferndale, but you're Hazel Park Schools. You know, so that's why you start to see school of choice come into play a lot more, because people within that region just feel like, "Well, I want to go to Ferndale Public Schools." So, if you look at our neighboring district's school of choice percentage, now, we've separated UHS to TCEC, because those are specialty programs. TCEC is our Adult and Alternative Education Program, and UHS is our college prep program that was created a while back. So if you remove those two, and you look at Ferndale K-12, our school of choice numbers are in line with other districts. I mean, it's not, it's not anything where we're an extreme outlier. So that myth, again, if you look at the vast majority of our students, roughly, you know, 87, 90% are coming within the district boundaries. Again, how schools were district, it just was done a long time ago, and that's a product of it. Then I hear this a lot, Ferndale has huge discipline, discipline issues. I've had people say, "Ah, you know, can I come take a tour? Because I'd like to see." Absolutely. You're always welcome in our schools, you're always welcome to come take a tour. And when they come through, it's almost as if they're in shock, like, because I've been in a lot of school districts, and our kids are wonderful. They're polite, they're friendly, they're helpful. The only way to combat this is to say, "Come into the schools. Be a part of the schools, see it for yourself." So that's what, if somebody came to you and asked that question, "Oh, do they have a discipline issue?", I would invite them in. Come see us. That's, to me, is the best way to combat that. So, I'm here, we're here, as kind of cheerleaders for Ferndale Public School in this sense. We're here to act as lead learners for our students, but there really is a lot of great things going on at Ferndale Public Schools. As I said, with our robotics, that's a top-tier program. Our marching band is always a state finalist. But the best thing about Ferndale Public Schools truly is our students. They make the difference. So we're very excited about the work that has taken place over the past five years. It was a great strategic plan that really led the district in the right direction. I'm here just to kind of continue to move it, continue to move it forward, and make adjustments as we need. So we're hoping that with your help, with the community's help, we can take it from a blueprint. You know, now we're kind of at the framing stages, if you think of it in a house, and we're going to work together now to kind of put the finishing touches on it, so that we have a nice product that we can all be proud of at the end. But, again, I thank everybody here for your support. I'm just going to plug, since I have the community here, plug a couple things. We have opening night for Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, March 17th at 7:30 PM. We also have our, yep, there you go, thank you, yes. Yes, and thank you to Jason for always coming to our meetings, we appreciate having him there. We also have our Ferndale Education Foundation Dinner at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center on April 27th at 6:00 PM. And again, I thank you for all your support. If you have any questions, I'll take them now.
Questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you Superintendent for coming here tonight and sharing the way forward here for the strategic planning process. I just wanted to share my experience, I attended last night's, the first input session, and I can tell you that, from my experience, it was well-moderated and very open to discussion. And Pleasant Ridge, there were several Pleasant Ridge residents that were there, and they spoke freely about the previous strategic plan, good ideas for the future, things to work on. And I just wanted to emphasize the invitation, that this is a great opportunity for all stakeholders in the district to participate in the process. I know last night's meeting was the first one, another one, I believe, on the 21st.
21st. At Ferndale Lower, yep.
At Ferndale Lower. And then what was really exciting, and you touched on it tonight, was this idea of the April retreat. The moderator really encouraged participation in that, because as you mentioned, I think it would be a very important opportunity to participate in this discussion. So I just wanted to reemphasize that to all stakeholders who are watching tonight's broadcast, that there are two very important opportunities coming up, and that, based on my experience last night, it was a very positive and collaborative experience. So I would encourage all our residents to take the opportunity to participate in that, and thank you, and thank the school board for, you know, the really inclusive nature of this process. I think that's what the residents of the district, and certainly here in Pleasant Ridge, appreciate, and like I said, last night was a great opportunity to do that, so, thank you.
Thanks for attending, yeah, I appreciate that.
Just wanted to thank you all for coming in. You know, and obviously, we all want Ferndale Schools to be successful, and we want the entire community. We've always, you know, Pleasant Ridge has always been very supportive in terms of the bond issues and everything, and it would be great to see more and more Pleasant Ridge parents participate in Ferndale Schools, and so, we are anxious to help in any way we can.
Thank you, you guys have been very helpful, I appreciate everything thus far.
Looking forward to the next five years.
Thank you.
And thanks to all of you, you don't have to stay. There's a lot of excitement coming up, but, you know.
But you can bail.
Amanda will sing.
I do. Singing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He might need it.
See, I can.
He gave him the out.
I know, I gave him the out, I didn't think he'd take it. We're supposed to take it.
That was hilarious.
They didn't move as quick as the baseball team does. They fly out of here. Just try to take the picture, let's just go.
The baseball team has ice cream to get to.
That's right. They may have ice cream to get to. You don't know what she promised them.
We're all going to treat dreams.
Ah, Jim's going to stay, thanks, Jim.
Well, Jason stays for us.
But he loves every minute of this, so you'll have to give good reviews. All right, we will move on to the City Commission Liaison Reports, starting with Commissioner Perry, Planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The DDA had a special meeting on February 26th. They met, and there was a special presentation from Living Lab that was regarding the proposed solutions for the Woodward Avenue streetscape within the DDA district. So basically, from Ten Mile, all the way south to Woodward Heights, and actually, a little bit south of that, too. And then, it was an amazing presentation, really interesting solutions. I mean, I think the whole board was very excited, and any of the residents who were there, too, were very much taken with this new solution, like thinking about how to reinvent that whole section, to make it more appealing for the businesses, and then for people to the customers who may be going to those businesses. So it's pretty cool. And now, Jim, you were saying, that's a, that's a long process that we're looking at for that project, right?
Yes, absolutely. One, because it's an expensive project, and so, ideally, to bring this to the best conclusion we can, we're going to need funding partners. So it's a state road, it's an MDOT road, so we have some resources and some grant opportunities we can pursue with the DEQ for some stormwater infiltration, and then also with MDOT, they have a transportation alternatives program. We've got a couple of letters of support we're doing for some Ferndale applications through that program later on, but that's a program we can also look at. But both of these have a long lead time, it's a state process, federal funding, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, if we're shovels in the ground in 2020, I think we're doing good, but, you know, that's, we're taking the first steps now towards hopefully having a much spiffier Woodward environment soon.
It's really beautiful.
Living Lands is so talented, too.
They are.
Just a question in terms of the sidewalks and everything. Are we going to be doing some of that this year? I mean, granted, streetscape, but there's some work that needs to be done.
We'll have to take a look. I mean, we redid a lot of the sidewalks already. If there's specific places where there's still.
We leveled the pavers over the last year.
Yeah, I mean, the pavers, a lot of the pavers have sunk over time, those we've put asphalt cold patch on, because those aren't in with the mainline travel on the sidewalk, but we replaced a lot of the sidewalks last year that were problematic, so hopefully, we're in good shape there. But, you know, we've got to look at it every year. We have trees, they move them.
So it was, so that was a great meeting. The next DDA and Planning Commission meeting will be held on Monday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM, right here at City Hall, so come by.
Thank you. Any questions for Ann?
It's a cool plan, check it out.
It's very nice.
Commissioner Scott, Storeville Commissioner.
Just a couple of quick things. The museum will be open this Saturday from 10 to noon. No food or green alcoholic beverages allowed, but you're welcome to wear green. And then our next meeting will be on April 4th at 7:00 PM.
We noticed coming in that there are little yellow flowers out in front.
Yeah?
Tom, get out there and take those pictures. We need all that, all that we can get.
Yeah, anything that says spring.
Commissioner Wal, Recreation Commissioner.
We have the pancake brunch and egg hunt coming up that is very awesome and exciting, and that is Saturday, April 24th, and the pancake breakfast starts at 10 o'clock, and the egg hunt starts at 11:30 sharp. So bring your baskets.
It is sharp, too.
March 24th.
Oh, gosh, don't come April 24th, it'll be way past Easter. March 24th. Sorry.
Okay.
It's short, yeah.
All right. Commissioner Krizyak, Ferndale Public Schools.
Yes, to follow up what Superintendent Bazey had mentioned, some updates really quick on the Monday, February 26th, 2nd, 26th, school board meeting, and this is something that I think speaks to the sense of community that is a fundamental part of the Ferndale School District. Every month, and Jim knows this, they do the Superintendent's Excellence Award, where they highlight the achievements of two students, one from Ferndale High School, one from University High School, and the February recipients are Lydia McKee and Tyree Edmondson, and they were there to receive their awards. There is also a part of the monthly agenda where the school board recognizes building pride, and the February school was Ferndale Lower, and the principal, Diana Keefe, was there to talk about all the great things going on there. There was also discussion of a drinking fountain grant from Oakland County, the district was awarded, and those will be installed soon, I believe. And just one more date, and this is a new thing that the district is trying, it's the stated district scavenger hunt, so it's an opportunity for district stakeholders, parents and children to learn more about the school, and this is the district at large, this is actually happening tomorrow, March 14th, 7:00 PM, at Ferndale High School, and it sounds like a really great idea to come and learn about what's going on at the districts. There's prizes and spear captains, and it sounds like a really good opportunity to learn even more about the district. If you, if you plan on going, they ask that you RSVP, but it's not a requirement. And that again, is tomorrow, March 14th, 7:00 PM, at Ferndale High School. And always, I know he was mentioned tonight, but Bill Good is the Communications Director at Ferndale High School, he's very approachable, and if you have any questions, you can always contact him at bill-good@ferndalschools.org, so, that's all I have. Oh, and don't forget upcoming production with Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat.
This weekend and next, right?
Yes. Opening night on the 17th, and then closing on Sunday, March 25th, so should be great.
Good shot. Okay, thank you. Any questions for me? Any other comments? Okay. Next item, Consent Agenda. Do you want?
Yeah, I would just ask that we remove item Consent Agenda 10F, and move it to item 13A.
Can you make a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that I move that the Consent Agenda be approved, with the exception of item 10F. the exception of item 10F be removed and moved to 13A.
Is there support?
There's support.
Any discussion? Andy, could you take a vote?
Commissioner Krizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes, Mayor Metzger.
Yes, so the consent agenda is approved with the adjustment of moving item F to 13A. Okay. Next item is public hearing and ordinance amendments. We have a series of four. We discussed these to some degree last month, but I will, we have four of them, so I will allow Jim to say a few words if he'd like to under each one before we open each public hearing.
Yes, a very few words. And I know that Greg has some updates for us on a couple of these as well.
Okay.
So we may need to look at a couple of these in specific, but you recall that the ordinances in question are, the first one is to amend section 14-136 through 14-143 of the code of ordinances to create a false alarms ordinance, just giving us a tool that we can use when we have recurring false alarms, hopefully to spur the owner to rectify the problem with the false alarms. It's a stick, you know, get them to take the carrot of fixing the issue that they have because it's a drain on police resources when we have to continuously respond to false alarms that can be prevented. Section 34-52, unlicensed vehicles. We do have an infrequent but periodically recurring issue where we have unlicensed or inoperable vehicles that are stored outdoors on private property. This ordinance would require them to be either stored in a garage or removed or licensed or made operable. Basically the problem rectified of eliminating the backyard blight. Section 70-21, the Michigan Vehicle Code violations and penalties, and this is one that Greg can speak more to. He's been doing a little bit of further research on this. This deals with Michigan Vehicle Code violation and penalties, increasing the maximum fine in subsection C for some OUI offenses from 700 to 1,000. And then section 70-86 through 88 of the code establishing cost recovery for prosecution expenses that the city incurs prosecuting OUI offenses. And so that's the very brief overview of the ordinances. I'd be happy to answer any questions or more likely to address and direct your questions to the city attorney for Greg's need. And Greg, do you want to give us something now?
Sure. Just on the one, the third amendment, section 7021 with regard to the increase of the fine of $1,000. Although the vehicle code provides for that, the Home Rule Cities Act still caps that at 700, so we're just going to ask that be kept at $700.
Oh, okay.
And I'll answer any questions on any of the other ordinances or that one.
So you have questions?
Thank you. On chapter 70, section 7086, the cost recovery, and this is just a ignorance of the legal system, but how does this affect the judge's determination of fines or cost recovery? Is that something that would normally be handed by judge or is that something that we need to take into our hands?
It's completely separate.
Okay.
It's a charge on our part. The court does not enforce that. It's not something that goes through pre-trial services. It's a completely separate issue that we've been doing for over a decade now.
Okay.
This just kind of cleans up a little bit of the language and helps us out a bit.
So we're already doing it?
Correct. I do that as soon as we get the adjudication from the court. I create the bill and it goes out.
Okay.
So we've been doing it for quite some time. Sergeant Bonning brought that up probably maybe early 2000s.
And so what kind of stuff is, are you guys looking to recover?
It's only for cost of officer time for alcohol and drum-related driving offenses.
Okay, so this is your time to attend the hearings to a hint?
It's for the officers being taken off the road.
Yes.
And court time.
Okay.
So it's a completely separate charge that the cities do, but we've been doing it for a while. It's just the language was cleaned up a bit.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that explanation because I was confused. I thought maybe this is something that a judge would handle.
Completely separate.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Sergeant can affirm this, but there is a lot of time spent with officers on these kinds of, on these kinds of tickets, these kinds of court proceedings. So it's certainly reasonable to have the offender pay some of those costs.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No problem.
Thank you. I guess that's kind of easy.
Public hearing, solicitation of public comments on an amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulation, by the addition of Article 7, False Alarms, an ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulation, by the addition of Article 7, False Alarms. Hereby open the public hearing. Anyone who has any comments? Come forth. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask, is there a motion to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulation, by the addition of Article 7, False Alarms be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? All right, may we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes, Mayor Metzger.
Yes. Motion carries. The next item for public hearing is solicitation of public comments on an amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 34, Nuisance, Article 3, Section 34-52, by the addition to a new section 13 regarding storage of unlicensed automobiles. And an ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 34, Nuisance, Article 3, Section 34-52, by the addition to a new section regarding storage of unlicensed automobiles. I will now open the public hearing. Gonna do it, right? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing and ask for a motion to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code.
Mayor, I move that the ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 34, Nuisance, Article 3, Section 34 through 52, by the addition to a new section 13 regarding storage of unlicensed automobiles be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Number three, solicitation of public comments on an amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 70, Traffic, Section 70-21, Violation and Penalties Regarding OUI Cost Recovery. I'm going to open the public hearing. Hen, wait.
Wait for it.
All right, hearing no comments, close the public hearing and ask for a motion to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code.
Mayor, I move that the ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 70, Traffic, Section 70-21, Violation and Penalties Regarding OUI Cost Recovery be approved.
With the $700 limit.
With the $700.
Part 3.
Thank you.
That's section 3.
Yeah.
The $700 limit, is there support?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Krizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. And finally, public hearing on solicitation of public comments on an amendment to the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 70, Section 70-86, Notice and 70-87, Failure to Pay Regarding OUI Cost Recovery Collection. I hereby open the public hearing. I'm going to be surprised if somebody comes through.
This is what they're all waiting for.
Come on. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code.
Mayor, I move that the ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Chapter 70, Section 70 through 86, Notice and 70 through 87, Failure to Pay Regarding OUI Cost Recovery Collection be approved.
Support.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Now we move into the 2018 HMA Resurfacing Project Bid Award.
Jim? Yes. Let's talk more infrastructure. This year, our infrastructure, street reconstruction project is Ridge, Indiana and Bermuda. And I'm happy to and proud to say that those are the last three streets to be rebuilt in town in this reconstruction cycle. So we should be good with complete reconstructions for a while. The city received five bids for the reconstruction of those three streets. James P. Contracting was the low bidder at $628,572 for the base bid. However, their bid was non-responsive because the bid specifications required a certified check and they submitted a bid bond. So for that reason, our city engineer and city staff is recommending that the city reject the low bid and accept the second low bid by Proline Asphalt and the amount of It's about a 4% price difference and, or about $20,000. So it's not a huge cost difference for the city with that difference. The low bid was also from, the second low bid for Proline Asphalt was also basically bang on with the engineer's estimate. So it's what we are expecting the project to cost and what we had budgeted for anyways. So no financial hardship to us there. The risk is if we accept the low bid with the non-compliant bid response, we could be opening ourselves up to a challenge of the bid from the other bidders. So then we could have legal expenses and we would have to defend that action through the court system. So for $20,000, it's probably not worth opening ourselves up to that risk. A little bit of background on the two projects. The base bid is for reconstruction and asphalt of those three streets as they exist today. This is a cost issue redoing those streets and concrete would add a lot of time and money to the project, to the point where we would have some stresses in our funding levels to be able to do those in concrete. We likely wouldn't be able to do all of them this year and we would be programming all of our road money towards these three streets, leaving us really nothing, nothing in the bank to handle future issues. We know we're going to have some patching projects to do, some of the streets that were reconstructed 20, 25 years ago, we're going to need some patching. You know, we've got some pop holes in town as you drive on some of our concrete streets. So this allows us to keep some dry powder to handle maintenance in an ongoing fashion. We did have alternate bid options. There were three of them. And these are alternates that are included in the bid to narrow the intersections of Open Park, Elm Park and Puppler Park at Ridge Road. Currently, all of those streets are 36 feet wide at Ridge, which is wider than your standard street intersection. Most of our streets are 27 feet wide, so you have 27-foot wide intersections at these streets and things work fine. These streets with 36-foot wide width add some additional crossing time for pedestrians and encourages driving around corners faster than you probably should. So the alternates would be designed much like this. This isn't what's in the plan specs, but it's something that's maybe a little bit prettier to look at. And it shows that we have the 36-foot wide existing width. This would bump out the corners to 28 feet. Still plenty of width for turning movements coming around these corners, shortens the pedestrian crossing, adds a little more green, narrows down the intersection a little bit. We did field test these in the fall. You may remember we had the temporary cones up. At that time, we tested a 24-foot width at the intersection and it was overly tight. We did get some comments about that. So in the plans, we widened this out to 28 feet, so it's actually wider than a standard 27 to 27-foot wide road intersection, knowing that we do get a lot of turning movements coming around these corners. That extra foot adds a little bit of wiggle room. So the question is, does the city commission want to accept these alternate bid? They cost about $17,500 each, so the total bid would end up being $703,702.98. And finally, it's as yet unknown exactly when the project will start. Once the bid is awarded, we need to meet with contractor and pin down the schedule. There's two ways this could go. They can't do Ridge until school lets out because we can't have that on our construction during the school year. So Ridge is a fix. That starts after school lets out. It's got to be done over the summer before school returns in September. The question is, does contractor want to start on Indiana and Bermuda beforehand and then move over to Ridge? Or do they want to mobilize once and be in town working on all three streets at one time? We don't know. We have to work that out with contractors. So we'll be starting either very soon or in June. So we'll keep you updated on that. We always have a pre-construction meeting with the residents beforehand to let them know what to expect. These streets are going to be a little bit different than our past streets because we do have a lot of, we do have 20 houses on Ridge that access through Ridge, but these are side streets for most residents who will still have access to their homes. So we won't have some of the, some of the logistics to deal with that we do on, on normal street projects, but of course it will be a disruption to everybody. So we'll, we'll have that pre-construction meeting so that everyone has the opportunity to find out the exact details of when, why, how and what. Scott, did you have anything to add on this or did I cover everything?
No, I, I think that's it. It was just mainly when, you know, when we start, I know this is way early, but just, you know, be cognizant that Ridge Road is a busy road and that ends into a pool and, you know, of course, it's always busy there during the summer. So we will have some logistics to deal with then, but all the other roads will be open. You'll be able to get, you know, from Woodside and some other streets. So it should be, you know, other than going around in a little circle, it'll be a minimal impact to most people, so.
We will, on that point, we will have traffic control that's in these bids at all of the streets at Woodward. So there will be signs there saying road closed.
Oh, good.
No traffic. So hopefully we can eliminate, you know, all of the people. Some people are still going to do it because it doesn't apply to them, but hopefully we minimize.
They're probably kidding, right?
Yeah.
It should be a little bit of a, it'll be a different process than what a lot of people are used to for the road constructions also because we're used to doing concrete, so the asphalt is, can be much quicker, you know, from when they put it down to when you're able to drive on it. So we'll, we'll let everybody know how that's going. It'll be an exciting summer to have, all of the roads really will be done at that point.
Question, are all three of the streets 36?
Yes. So is.
So it would be the same design essentially?
Yes, same. Same design. We did not include this. The intersection at Oxford, Cambridge and Ridge is also 36 feet wide, but with the school traffic in the morning, there's actually a need for that extra width there to accommodate the cars that stack up around the corner. So that one was, is proposed to remain at 36.
Is there any discussion, questions for Jim?
So Jim, with the, with that narrowing thing, does that help slow all the traffic down as well or what are the main, what's the main purpose of it?
So the main purpose is it will, it will somewhat slow cars going around that corner just because it'll be a little bit tighter. It also has the benefit of if you were waiting to cross now as a pedestrian, you step out a little bit further so you're more visible to a car coming from either direction. And the width, it's about 23, I think 23% shorter, so your crossing time is 23% faster. So you're in that intersection crossing quicker. So, you know, for a normal person who's jogging or an adult, that's not a big deal, but if you have kids or, you know, if you're elderly or if you move a little slower, then that's a big deal.
And the studies found that it slowed people down when they were turning, right? Because it's not as.
Speed wasn't our primary consideration there.
Okay.
And our traffic counter wouldn't catch a lot of the turning movements.
Okay.
So we didn't study speed.
Okay.
It's just from the body of transportation engineering research.
It's a school standard.
It will slow down traffic to some extent, but I don't have a number for you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes. I do. I, because I know the reviews on the, on the study that we did were mixed, it might make sense to actually have a public hearing on this item before we vote on it. I don't know what that means with respect to the timing of our decision in maintaining this price point, or if the price point goes up dramatically because we don't close the bid on the roads at the same time that we do the project.
Right. I spoke with the city engineer today about that. As long as we decide relatively soon, it shouldn't impact the price.
If we decided at the next month's meeting, would that be not soon enough?
No, I think next month's meeting would be okay for making a decision, a decision on the alternates. Do you want to award the base bid tonight?
Yes, that was what I was thinking, only because we have gotten some mixed reviews on them. I'm personally in favor of it, but I do recall hearing some people.
I think it's also important, don't you think, to let people know that it is, it's four inches, you said, four inches?
Feet.
Four, sorry, four feet more than what we tested.
And that was, right, and we, so we tested the most aggressive kind of option, and I think, so people, yes, we got a few, it wasn't a lot. We got a few comments about how it was uncomfortable and difficult to turn. And I think in the middle of the test, we went and actually widened it out a little bit and tested that as well, and, you know, just from driving it, it was easier, moving around, Scott.
I was one of the mixed reviews at the 23 feet because it was, well, because it made this, this turn tight while people were waiting on the Ridge Road, and the minute we opened it up, it, it just changed it. It was, it was just the way you were, cars turning onto Ridge and you were turning off Oakland, you almost couldn't make that, both make that turn, like, you had to wait for that car to turn, and it was, and it created a log jam on Ridge more than anything, but the minute it changed to that, took out, made it not the 23 feet, it, it took that away, so it was.
So when it was widened up to like the 28?
When it was what, 23 feet?
23 feet.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was really tight to make that turn, to make, be able to make that turn onto Ridge while there was a car waiting to turn onto Oakland, you couldn't.
Didn't feel comfortable making?
No, it was, I mean, it was really, really tight, but, and that was just me, I just, when I talked to Jimmy, he goes, "Oh, well, this is 23," so then we went and moved it, and it, and it cleared it up right away, it really did, so. Just thought I'd mention that, because that was one of the.
We converted Scott during.
Yeah, so, yeah, right away.
Any other items for discussion?
Sure. On the Indiana reconstruction, I know we've talked in the past about the trees and how road construction affects the trees, and I know the trees on Indiana have been of special concern the last few years with their health and stuff like that. Is there, there's no real plan, or there's really no effect foreseen on those trees during this project, or how would you categorize how those trees would survive or handle this construction?
The good thing, the good thing with redoing in asphalt, and part of the reason why we're redoing in asphalt is because by and large, on all of these streets, the curbs are in good shape. We don't have a lot of curb replacing we have to do, so we're leaving the curb in this case, and then we're doing some as-needed repairs where, you know, there's some, some issues with the curbs, but there's not a lot that require work. In a normal street construction project, everything, the curbs were removed and everything, so when you remove the curb, then you have to go another foot back from the curb to accommodate the machines for the pour and everything, so it gets very intrusive and difficult for the trees when you're doing curbs, because it increases that area of impact. With this, we, we think that the trees should fare much better in this project because the curbs are staying, and all of the work will be in the middle of the road, and in fact, they'll be milling out and pouring new, putting new base down where necessary, but it will not be nearly as, as involved of an operation that it has been for all the concrete streets. So, the impact on the trees should be less. Now, we have very narrow, on Indiana specifically, we do have very narrow tree lawns. They're five feet wide in a lot of instances, which is quite narrow. So, yes, machines are probably gonna bump a few trees, it's inevitable when you have machinery out there. It happens on every street project we do, that we just have some during the project, so we try to save everything we can. What we're gonna do is after the street project, we're gonna go back, evaluate how the trees do, and then we'll make a decision on what we need to remove in the fall. Throughout the summer, we always get our big list of tree work to be done, so we'll look at the trees after the project, see how they're doing, decide if we need to take them out or if we can keep trying to nurse them along. If we need to take them out, then we'll remove them and then replace them in the spring.
Okay.
Of next year.
Yes. Okay. No, I know just that, you know, that Indiana tree canopy is just a point of pride, and I know it's been struggling for a few years, and I would hate to see this project kind of be the death knell of those trees, and just glad that we're keeping tabs on the health of the trees and then make a decision afterwards, because, yeah, I think it's just such a attribute to, you know, the, the tree canopy there on Indiana, and I appreciate the concern of the health of the trees, because I think it's, it's really a vital component of, of that part of the city, so.
And one thing that, that we always tell residents is that we have the leaf rust, which has been the issue with those trees for a number of years now. We don't treat for it because it requires spraying pesticides four times a year, and that gets expensive, and I don't know if we want to be spraying pesticides throughout all of the east side. That's a specific issue, but the other issue we have is those are Bradford pear trees, and those trees are not long-lived trees, and a lot of them are plant, a lot of those trees are actually just at end of life. So I know that it's been, you know, they're, they're loved for, you know, that you do get that great tunnel, tunnel of flowers in the springtime, it's, you can't beat that. But regardless of the construction project or the leaf rust, some of those trees are just getting an end of life anyways, so, but we do have a plan.
What tree grows on Indiana? I forget what tree we picked for Indiana.
It's a Japanese tree, lilac. So it's a lilac tree, but it's a tree form, and they're hardier and a little longer lived than those Bradford pears, and less smelly in the spring, too.
But they have a blossom.
They are a flowering ornamental tree, and they don't, the Bradford pears also get taller, so you know the one side of the street has the wire, so you've got all of the, they've been gouged over the years on the one side of the street, so the lilac trees stay a little more compact, so you won't get them going into those and being hacked apart by DTs much.
They're beautiful, they're fragrant, I think.
The tunnel effect is certainly diminished over the years. There ain't much of a tunnel anymore, so it was, it was nicer for its time. Any other? Well, I'm gonna, based on discussion and my own personal feelings, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the project bid and hold off the alternatives until.
Do we need a motion for a public hearing? Or do we?
Do we want to do a public hearing?
Or do we need a public hearing?
Should we do a discussion versus a public hearing?
It's a good question.
Just throwing it out there.
You don't have to have a public hearing this month if you approve the base bid and then indicate that the alternatives will be discussed in jury committee.
Right, I wouldn't call it a public hearing.
Let's do it that way, yeah.
How, just call it that we would.
The community will have enough.
On the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
The tradition will be out there.
That's fine.
We will publicize.
There you go.
Good.
That's perfect.
I think that will be, okay. So, is there a motion to approve the project bid?
Mayor, I move that the bid for the 2018 HMA resurfacing project be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, Proline Asphalt, $11,797.29 of Washington, Michigan, in the base amount of $648,178.98.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, and so we will have the alternate bids next month. Next item, SEMCOG TAP grant letter of support, regional bike share project.
Yes. And actually, the, the agenda says "letter," but it's "letters." Ferndale is leading one regional TAP grant and applying for another TAP grant on their own to SEMCOG. Given that we are in the, I guess, the area of impact of those grants, they're asking us for letters of support. Front Pleasant Ridge is not a part of either of these projects, we're not funding them, we're not doing anything or participating in them, we're merely providing our, our support to the applications. I have a little bit of information about those. One of them I know has been discussed a little bit, and it's the Bike Hub, so let me run through the presentation for the Bike Hub here. This is the regional project that the city of Ferndale has been leading with Mogo, and if you've been downtown, if you've participated or used or seen the bike share system downtown, it's, it's pretty cool. It's taken off pretty well down there. They're having some good success with the Mogo system. And it's a bike share system, so you go and you do a short-term rental, you put your money in the kiosk or your account in the kiosk, you take the bike, you ride it to wherever you want to go, you return it to one of their kiosk stations, and then off you go. So it's a great circulating system if you arrive and you want to circulate around an area that has a lot of destinations without having to drive and park and then move and park again, or if you're riding transit and then you want to circulate, it's, it's a great solution for that. Some workers can use this during the day to move around for lunch, take this to appointments, so where you have the density, it works very well, and it's had a lot of success in cities all across the country. This is an example of what the stations look like, and then you've got your target station sightings in downtown area, they're looking for a quarter mile or a five-minute walk between stations. Here, what they're calling the regional hub in southeast Oakland County, they're shooting for a half a mile between stations, which is about a 10-minute walk. Things are a little more spaced apart here than the downtown system. So this is the downtown bike share system, if you're curious where they're all at.
Wow.
And you can see it's the very standard three-and-a-half-square-mile core between the Lodge 75 centered on Woodward and Cass, and then, of course, it also spreads out along the waterfront, so it's your very typical kind of T of where things are happening downtown. For the regional hub, and this is at a much larger scale than the, the previous map, but these are the locations that the communities participating or potentially participating in this project identified for where they thought they might have stations. So you've got a number of Royal Oak stations, and then you've got your Ferndale stations. Oak Park also has some. Huntington Woods identified a few stations, I'm sorry, this is Oak Park, this is Huntington Woods, same color, but Huntington Woods and Mattson Heights have ultimately decided to not participate in the program, as did Pleasant Ridge. We, we declined to participate in this simply because we're 95% residential. We don't have a lot of destinations that people are coming to. Yes, people come from out of town to go to Cork or the Whistle Stop or, you know, some of our shops, but not in any number to support biking or a bike share. All of those places have their own parking lots, so we don't have the density necessary. But if the system takes off and is successful, and we want to add a, a kiosk station in the future, we can do that. There's a cost involved in that, of course, and that's why we're declining to participate now, this is not free. But, you know, our residents, if you're gonna ride your bike somewhere, our residents have a bike in the garage that they'll ride, so we didn't think it made a lot of sense given the cost.
What is the one over by, is that by Iron Ridge, or what is that?
Yes, that's an Iron Ridge stop, so that one, I believe, is going to be in the Ferndale portion of the Iron Ridge developer, but that could be a noted activity that might, would warrant, I think, a bike share station. So, yeah, that's a good spot. So you have different kiosk options, you've got the full-blown big one, you've got the medium-level one, and then you've got the satellite station. I think most of our stations here in this project would be satellite stations, but all of these are in the five figures. I'm not at liberty to discuss these, and Mogo has requested we keep the exact pricing quiet, but they're in the five figures for all of these. So there is a cost, there's an operating cost, it's $89 per docking point, so if you have a seven satellite station, that's 500 and something dollars a month, that's 7,000, $7,500 a year, every year of operating costs. And that pays for, you know, the rebalancing when you've got a station where all the bikes disappear, they drive a van around and move the bikes, so you've got stock everywhere, maintaining the bikes, fixing the bikes, you know, this is just the cost to operate. I don't know that the usage here would be high enough to, to warrant that, so just wanted to give some background into this. I know there's been some discussion about it, people are obviously enthusiastic about this, I think would like to see it in town, it would be a very cool thing, but I don't think the cool thing weighs out the financial thing for us. This will be going forward with the application this March, award announcements are expected this summer, inter-local agreement between the participating communities will have to happen later on. You might see this launch in spring of 2019, if they're successful in getting this going. That's the first item. Second item.
I was just gonna say, I think the important item is the fact that we can participate later on.
Correct.
You know, we're not shut out if we don't, you know, do you do it or not?
And express our, the support of it.
Right, right.
Yes. The other project is Ferndale. They are doing a TAP grant application for Woodward Heights between the Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale boundary, and then this goes all the way over to Hilton and beyond, but this is the sheet of interest for us, because this is the city boundary, this is Woodward Heights, Bermuda, so you'll know where the little Pleasant Ridge entry sign is right here, and you can see that Ferndale has yellow center stripes and we do not. They're, they've done bike lanes on Woodward Heights, they are resurfacing the street, and they're looking to upgrade the bike lanes with a little more paint, and they're looking to add some sidewalks as well. You may know that on the south side of Woodward Heights, once you get a little past the railroad tracks, there's no sidewalks, so they're proposing to add that sidewalk, add the bike lane crossings with the paint, do some buffering of these bike lanes as well, that's just the wider striped-out area with some of the bollards that add some sense of protection for bikes there, so this is something that our residents could certainly use, you know, coming right up to our doorstep. So they requested a letter of support, that's in your packet. This is a very quick overview of what they're proposing on Woodward Heights, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on either of these.
Any question?
Those are cool.
Nice letters.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I like the letters, too. All right, well, that was easy, right? Do we have a motion to support the letters of support?
Your honor, I move that the letters of support for the city of Ferndale TAP grants through SEMCOG be approved and transmitted to the city of Ferndale for inclusion in their grant application.
Is there support?
Support.
Any more discussion? All right, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Send those letters out. All right, next item is item 13A, which was the item we moved from the consent agenda. This is the resolution in support of the March of Our Lives event to be held Saturday, March 24, 2018. Before I read it, I wanted to acknowledge that Commissioner Crisio had sent it forward, it had been discussed and approved, a similar letter was approved at the Royal Oak City Commission, and Jason and Ann both forwarded it to me and asked if it could be included in this, in our package, so if you want to just, do you have introductory words before we read them?
Well, I think Robert, Representative Wittenberg gave a, a good introduction to kind of what's going on on the legislative side, efforts in particularly the state of Michigan to deal with some of the issues. Chief mentioned the mental health, health aspect of it, which I think is, is vital. I think there's just a moment, I hope, in our country where we can come together and, and do something to, you know, stop this, because, you know, I, I send my kids to school every day, and they're aware, right? I mean, they're very aware, obviously, of what's going on.
They're going through drills now.
Yeah. So, to me, I think it's, it's, it's gotta be a community effort and a societal effort, and I love the dialogue that we've had in this meeting about some specific solutions, but I just felt when I had seen the Royal Oak resolution, kind of crystallized my feelings as a representative of this community, and something that I thought was worthy of our support, so I just want to, you know, appreciate Commissioner Perry's support on this, and also acknowledge the fact that our mayor, Kirk, has been, you know, a leading advocate of common sense reform for many, many years, so I think it's something that members of this community in Pleasant Ridge feel strongly about and want to see action taken on. Obviously, at the local level, we don't have those big levers to really move, basically putting our support in a resolution and making sure that our representatives in higher office recognize the urgency. So, you know, there's not much more, I can say, I mean, we're all aware of what's going on in our country, but in light of the action that's being taken tomorrow at many of our community schools, I know Berkeley, Ferndale, Royal Oak, you know, Detroit, the community schools, the student populations have really taken the initiative on this in ways that I never did, I never thought to do on any issue at this age, so, and then highlighting the national effort on March 24. So just, I think, to support what's going on tomorrow, let the children know, and the leadership in, in that community that, you know, the adults are supportive and encouraging and want to see, you know, their school years filled with books and playgrounds and memories and not, you know, the horror of what, you know, we've, we've witnessed in this country, so that was the, the impetus of bringing this to, to this body, and I appreciate, like I said, Commissioner Perry and your willingness to talk about it at this evening's meeting.
So if you will indulge me, I'd like. So if you will indulge me, I'd like to read, read the resolution in support of March for Our Lives. Whereas the United States leads the world in the number of mass shootings defined as four or more people being shot in one instant, not including the shooter. And whereas statistics from the gun violence archives reveal there have been 1,627 mass shootings in 1,870 days. And whereas perpetrators of mass shootings prey on the most vulnerable of our society, making schools their targets. And whereas since January 1st, 2018, there have been at least seven shootings in American schools resulting in injury or death in a total of 208 since the Columbine school shooting on April 20th, 1999. And whereas since this crisis became evident and debate commenced regarding the role of mental illness contributes to mass shootings, neither Congress nor the state legislator, state legislature have found the political will to reduce access to military-grade assault weapons or enact any other effective gun control policies. And whereas calls to fortify our schools and armed professional educators do nothing to address the true cause of the uniquely American problem. And whereas the Parkland survivors have decided that enough is enough and have organized a March for Our Lives to take place Saturday, March 24th, 2018. And whereas students from around the country and the world will unite on March 24th to show their resolve and demand action from legislators for comprehensive gun control. And whereas we believe all children deserve safe and healthy environments to pursue their education and that it is our responsibility to provide them with this most basic necessity. And whereas we believe children in Pleasant Ridge are no less at risk than anywhere else in the country. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Pleasant Ridge stands with the students and children of our community by demanding that our state and federal elected officials enact sensible gun control policies. And be it further resolved that the city of Pleasant Ridge invites all residents to join in showing support on March 24th, 2018, as we all come together for our children and their future and join them in the March of Our Lives. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Your honor, I move that the resolution in support of the March of Our Lives event to be held Saturday, March 24th, 2018 be approved.
Is there support?
I support.
Any further discussion, comments?
One thing that I called our, I called Representative Wittenberg's office and Senator Gregory's office. One of the things they said, you know, because obviously these two support, you know, very measured, wise, responsible gun laws, they said, don't hesitate, you know, do call all the representatives, call the, in our state, because all of these gun laws are being really activated at the state. They're the only ones taking any measures. And we know that our state, I don't know if things have stopped with some of the measures that they were trying to take of, you know, allowing guns in schools and things like that. But it's important for all of us to call all of these different representatives and senators across our state and try and change some minds, you know, through the volume of calls, through, you know, our, our statements. And what the students are doing is beautiful. And one of the things I was most moved by was one of our residents talking about how, like, they don't want their children to, these memories of, you know, these, the, what were you saying there? The, the practices of...
Right. Instead of tornado drills, you have this going on.
I'm sorry, it's silly to get emotional.
It's not silly.
It's very, it's, it's like a ridiculous thing, you know, when we know that, you know, it's proven, as, as Representative Wittenberg said, that the states that have taken more aggressive stances against, you know, assault weapons and things like that, that they have, there's definite data to prove that it's...
Makes a difference.
So, thank you, Jason, for, you know, making sure that we move forward on this.
That's great.
And it is an election year, so if an issue is important to you, then it's time to write. These things become focus points, and we know that this is a big issue because it affects our children and our grandchildren, what we do today.
All right, may we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Crizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Mott.
Yes, motion carries. Okay. The next item is the city manager's report.
Nothing heard of tonight.
Nicely done. Then we move to other business.
Thank you, Mayor. Reminder, book club is tomorrow. We'll be discussing unconventional leadership, what Henry Ford in Detroit taught me about reinvention and diversity. And this is by Nancy Schlichting. Took a month to practice that one. But this is a really brief outline of her experiences at the Henry Ford Health System of interest. This will be tomorrow. And then April's book will be April 11th, Wednesday, April 11th, Hotel on the Corner of Bitter and Sweet, a novel by Jamie Ford. I have no idea what this is about, but it came highly recommended, so anxious to get into this one. So that'll be April's book. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, then... What do you mean by that? Anybody else with anything? All right, then I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
It's almost.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.